Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. First of all, I want to thank Andrew Sutton and Dale Wells tonight from CHCL for making sure that this is televised tonight and is being recorded so people can watch it later on. In just, council in just three weeks, Remembrance Day will be here. Please join me, join with me in a moment of silence to remember our veterans for defending our freedoms and all soldiers who have paid the ultimate price for Canada. Join me in a moment of silence. Dear Lord, we thank the men and women currently wearing the Canadian uniform throughout the world in the name of peace. We pray for their safety, for they are, as we speak, taking their rightful place among the greatest generations that have worn our nation's uniform. And because Remembrance Day is coming up, "In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow between the crosses row on row that mark our place, and in the sky, the lark still bravely singing, fly scarce heard amid the guns below. We are the dead; short days ago we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow; loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders Fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe; to you from failing hands we throw the torch; be yours to hold it high. If ye break faith with us who die, we shall not sleep, though poppies grow in Flanders Fields." Tonight is, number three is Record of the Tenants, Call of Council is here tonight. Next is Business arising. Addition to the agenda resurfacing of the thirty-five by sixty basketball court at the school, I guess we would have to have a motion on the floor to add this to the agenda tonight.
It's in the number four approval agenda?
So it's already in there, so we don't need a...
It's right in the approval motion.
Right, exactly. So I want to take a, I want to look for a motion for, for, Councilor Thompson.
So be it resolved that the agenda for the October twentieth, two thousand twenty-one regular council meeting be accepted as presented with the addition of item fifteen point five, resurfacing thirty-five by sixty-foot basketball courts, outside courts at the school.
That's motion, and seconded by Council Libby. All those in favor of adding this to the agenda tonight, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary, and it's passing unanimously, so now it's on my end. Brings to approval of the agenda. Tonight, we have to have a motion to approve the agenda tonight.
That was what you just said.
Okay. Six, disclosure of conflict of interest, anybody, any conflict of interest tonight? None? Seven is approval of council minutes, seven one, regular council meeting, September the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. I need a motion for that.
Be it resolved that the minutes from the regular meeting of September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one are pre-circulated and approved and filed.
Thank you. Council Libby, seconded by Council Ritchie. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary, and it's passing unanimously. Why am I getting seven one, seven two? Special meeting, seven two, special meeting, October the fifth, two thousand twenty-one. I need a motion for tho, for that to be passed tonight. Council Ritchie?
Be it resolved that the minutes from the special meeting, October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, as pre-circulated, be approved and filed.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor. Question or comment? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary, and it's passing unanimously. That brings us to staff reports, the Fire Department report, do we have a Fire Department report tonight? Okay, that's ready there?
Yep, yep. Can you just blow it up a little bit?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Council Ritchie to try to summarize the report.
Just right there, yep.
Is that figured out?
Yep. So it's just a summary report of the incidents per month in the Eastern Charlotte Regional Fire Service. So for us this month, the alarm with no fires, there responded to two, and the, so I guess ultimately there was only two incidences this month that we had to report to, which is the same as last year, the same month at this time. Other, other incidences that we had to report to that weren't alarms, there was one for rubbish, vehicle accident, one for public hazard, one for public services.
I think that might be last year's.
Yeah, I think it compares to last year's.
I think it's just compared to last year's, September twenty twenty.
Right, so it's just, the incidences in total that the Fire Department reported to were six, which would have been a recap of, yes, sorry, last month, not, not the end of Oc, not October, because we're not to the end of the month yet.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to accept the Fire Department report. That was Council Ritchie.
Be it resolved that the Fire Department reports for the month of September twenty twenty-one be approved and filed.
Seconded by Council Ritchie. All those in favor of accepting the Fire Department report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary, and it's passing unanimously. Building inspector report is next. And who?
I'll do that, she was just gonna pull it up on the screen.
And you're gonna do that for us? Great, thank you.
Can you see everything here? No, I can see it. So the month, month estimated value is fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars, and total permits issued to, year to date are twenty-four, with the current estimated value of three hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
That was August.
That was August. Okay, so I need a motion to accept the August report.
Yep, for that, be it resolved that the building inspector report for the month of August twenty twenty-one be approved and filed.
Great, Council Ritchie, seconded by Council Libby. All those in favor of accepting the, the August report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary, and it's passing unanimously. September report, Council Ritchie again.
Yep, so the month estimated total for September, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The total permits issued year to date for the month is, to the end of the, the month of September are twenty-eight, with a total estimated value of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. And so be it resolved that the building inspector's report for the month of September twenty twenty-one be approved and filed.
Council Ritchie made the motion, seconded by Council Thompson. Question or comment? All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary, and it's passing unanimously. Public Works Report for September twenty twenty-one.
I'll do that.
Excellent, thank you, Council.
All right, so just to recap, I guess, for the month of September two thousand twenty-one, so a few key points here to mention, so chlorine, flow meter filters in the building, and the boom checks were done daily. Lift stations were checked every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, with water tests on every second Tuesday, and sewer tests on once a month. So obviously, checked and collected trash in the bins around the village daily, as required. Garbage collection occurred every Thursday, and recycling pickup as per calendar on Wednesdays. So in terms of the equipment, there was really nothing to note on the garbage truck backhoe, any road work or anything, so other than those items, I guess that would pretty much summarize the, the activities for September. So be it resolved, Public Works Report for the month of September two thousand twenty-one be approved and filed.
Seconded by Council Ritchie. Question or comment? All those in favor of accepting the Public Works Report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary, and it's passing unanimously. Eight, four, CEO, CAO report, there's none. Nine is accounts, approval of budget figures. And somebody was gonna do that today?
Be it resolved that council approves the budget figures for the period ending September three of two thousand twenty-one?
Council Libby, and seconded by Council Thompson. Question or qua, or comment on that? All those in favor of that, that motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary, and it's passing unanimously. Nine, two, approval of accounts payable.
Be it resolved that council approved the total accounts payable paid and/or payable for the month of September twenty twenty-one in the amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents, and payables to the, to date for the month of October twenty twenty-one in the amount of a hundred and three thousand, a hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents.
Thank you, Council Libby, seconded by?
I'll second that.
Council Thompson. Question or comment on that? All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary, and it's passing unanimously. That brings us to reading petitions, presentations, and proclamations. And tonight, we have Sarah Norman with us. And Sarah, you are, you have the floor. And you, the camera's right there, so you, and you can, and the microphones right there.
Get away from the office. Can I just move along? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Town Council. I am Sarah Norman. I am the Executive Director of the St. George and Area Food Bank. And for those of you who don't know me, I have been working at the food bank for the last twelve years. During my time as the Executive Director there, I've had the opportunity to also sit as a district representative for the Provincial Food Bank Association, and I've also been able to sit on the Food Banks Canada's Network Council, representing New Brunswick. During all this time, I've had a lot of opportunities to see many food banks across the country, and one of the things I've discovered is we're all doing the same thing, but we're all doing it so differently. I'm coming here today to make sure that your, your council knows and is aware of the services that the food bank provides. So our food bank actually serves clients from Maces Bay all the way to the Bochaback area, so Blacks Harbor is included in that, and almost fifty percent of our clients are actually Blacks Harbor, Penfield residents. So I'm just here today, making sure that you're aware of the services that we offer, and one of the things we find is, we're very heavy on social media, but we can't do a newspaper article for every program that we offer. So by coming to groups such as yours, talking about what we do, you are the people that helps ensure other people know what we're doing. There are people that we call the unreachable, those people who don't have Facebook, those people without computers, who don't know who we are or where we are, and the only way that you can let them know is by sharing what you hear here today. So I'm just gonna take you a quick walk through all of our programs and services, and we have a lot of them. So Stacy, if you could go ahead to the next slide, please. If anybody's not aware where we're located, we are centrally, centrally located in St. George, right on Main Street. We're in the same building complex as the optometrist and the seniors apartment buildings. One of the fantastic things about this location is that we are on Main Street, but our front door does not face the road, and that's good for a number of reasons. For some people who may have never needed to go to the food bank before, accessing our services can be really, really hard to do. You, you have to admit that you need help, you may have a sense of your, your pride hurting, so one of the great things about this building is there's so many other things happening there. A car leaving our driveway does not mean that they were at the food bank, and that makes it a little bit easier for people to access our services. I'll have the next slide, please, Stacy. So that right there is a picture that captures our service area. As I said, we reach all the way from the La Pro, Maces Bay area, all the way to Bochaback. That's well over a thousand square kilometers in that service area. Next slide, Stacy. This summer, we recently changed our mission statement, and the reason we did that is we wanted to reflect the importance of sharing more than just food with our customers. So we changed our mission statement to, by sharing skills, knowledge, and basic necessities such as food, clothing, and respect, we enable our neighbors to have an improved quality of life. There's still a really large misconception in our area that our food bank is just passing groceries out the door, and I'm here to tell you the difference in that today. So last year, we had two hundred and thirty-nine different families registered for our services. I should be very clear that those families can be a single individual, a family can be grandparents with children, a family could be two parents and three children. Family is really harmonious with the term household for us. So something that's really neat, that a lot of people don't know, this number right here, fifty percent, fifty percent of the families that we saw accessing our services last year only needed our service three times or less. There is a huge misconception that we are serving the same families month after month after month, and this number proves that differently. So in the last four years, we've been able to start capturing this number, and that number has ranged from forty-eight to fifty-two. Last year, we were right at the fifty mark, which is what I love to see. Next slide, please. Last year, in two thousand twenty, a lot of the, a lot of people do ask us, where do we get our food? This slide right here will just help kinda, help you identify where that food is coming from. A little over twenty-eight thousand pounds of food was donated by our very own community. That is, school food drives, that is, the neighbor down the road dropping off a bag of pasta and a bag of sauce, once every other month. A little over nineteen thousand pounds were purchased by the food bank. The main things that we purchase at our food bank do tend to be milk, eggs, bread, and meat. Outside of that, the next thing we purchase most often tends to be fresh fruit and vegetables. And a little over twenty-four thousand pounds was donated to the food bank through our provincial association. That's okay. Nope, oh, nope, that's okay.
Terrifying.
Perfect, thank you so much. So a little over fifty-eight thousand, five hundred pounds of food is the amount of food that left our doors last year to families in, in our service area. Now, I want to be clear that that number is actually much larger. That number does not capture programs that happen off-site, such as our Kids in the Kitchen program, or the Community Pantry, or the Healthy Snack Program, which goes directly to our schools. So if we did include that number, I would estimate we could add another fifteen to twenty thousand pounds on that. This is just a quick snapshot of what we see month to month. March, two thousand twenty-one, we saw ninety-eight different households, and we saw between ten and fifteen of them actually come back for a second visit. That does happen occasionally, where you just can't make the food last. The amount of food people are leaving and taking home is anywhere from a four to five-day supply. This little snapshot right here will also give you a quick breakdown of the ages of the families that we're serving. One of the things you'll notice is that the amount of children that we served is one-third. That is a number that has stayed consistent, month after month, since I have gotten there. One-third of our clients served each month, our children. Yes, please. Okay, so I'm now gonna start taking you through all of our individual programs, now that I've given you a little bit of base information about who we are. Before I begin, does anybody have any burning questions? Great. Okay, so the first program on, I want to tell you about is our Emergency Food Service, and it's our namesake, it's the thing that we're most known for. People can access food bank services any Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, between the hours of nine and twelve, and appointments outside of those times can be made. All someone needs to do is just call us and let us know, we can have someone available. In two thousand twenty, the food bank was accessed one thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight different times for emergency food assistance. Another program that we offer, along with Emergency Food Services, one we call our Protein Power Program, and this is the provision of milk and eggs for, for not only families with children, but now all families that come and visit us. This is a program that's actually occasionally eas, easily funded. It's a no-brainer, people need that really great nutrition that you can get, and the protein from milk and eggs, so this tends to be a program we're able to find funding Has anybody here heard of Repeat Boutique? Adam, I think you might have moved us a few times. Thank you, by the way. So Repeat Boutique is, is relatively new to us, it's been in operation a little over a year now, and Repeat Boutique is actually, it was a brainchild between the St. George Food Bank and the Community Living Center. Both of our organizations had big needs, and we needed to figure out how to meet them. The need at the food bank was, our, our community is so generous donating stuff, we were practically drowning in it, we didn't have the space for it, we couldn't give it away for free fast enough. What were we going to do? And the issue with Community Living Center is that they had many individuals who were job-ready and had nowhere to go to work. So it took some time and a lot of thoughts, but we, we managed to come up with Repeat Boutique, which is a social enterprise, and one of the great things about this business is that our main focus is not profits. So we're going in, and our main intentions are ensuring that those people who access food bank services get the things that they need for free, and we do that by providing them with gift, gift certificates to the store. If somebody needs a new pair of winter boots, a winter jacket, or dishes, we write them a gift certificate, they go to the store, get what they need for free. Community living clients are now working, they are in the public, learning job skills in real time, hands-on, and our community now has a space to bring all these things, and now we have a new place to shop from. So besides doing all that, the food bank also looks after rehoming furniture and large appliances. We will continue to do that, but we're always looking for volunteers with trucks, so I'll just leave that with you. Next slide, please, Stacy. Our food bank garden, so the garden grows differently every year, for the lack of a terrible pun, or not for the lack of a terrible pun. The food bank garden, we do have a garden right on site, but this summer, we chose to expand the garden quite a bit, and we also use the community garden in town, at, in St. George, as well as, we actually took over another garden that was on premises. This is actually a really wonderful learning site. We, we accessed the youth at the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club this year, and they came and they helped plant, and they learned how to look after vegetables, watering and weeding, and they also worked on some other creative projects as well, making scarecrows and learning about pollinators, those kinds of things. The really great thing about this is that food banks generally have mostly processed canned products, but we have huge capacity to hold fresh and frozen foods, so us growing it is actually one, is a great resource in the summer that our clients really look forward to. Next one? Yep. Okay, our Community Volunteer Income Tax Program. I'm not sure if you know this, but we have volunteers at the food bank trained by the CRA that can complete your relatively simple income tax returns, and we can do it for free. If you average, an average price for somebody going to a, a bigger company to have their income tax return done is generally between forty and sixty dollars, based on that price. Last year, we did a hundred and seventy-five returns, and actually, we've done many more since. We've, we know that we've saved members of our community a little over ten thousand, five hundred dollars by providing that service. We're always looking for more volunteers willing to join that as well. Our Healthy Snack Program, so this picture right here, the individual you see in the picture, her name is Margot, she's a longtime volunteer and a retired school teacher. She really understands the importance of youth having access to nutritional foods when they're trying to learn. We can't always control what's happening in the home, how much they get, or when, but when they are at school, it's a little easier to know if people are eating or not. So we can, we connect with the schools every year, at the beginning of the year, to ask them, what sorts of snacks do they want? And we focus on the really fresh things, fresh nutritious things like milk, apples and oranges, yogurt, cheese drinks, we really try to stay away from the Rice Krispie treats and the granola bars. So this is a service that goes out monthly and is delivered to all five of our local schools, and that does include the Fundy Shore School, which is way up in Maces Bay. Cooking classes, this is something relatively new at the food bank, and it, it's, it's growing its own. We've attempted to do some cooking classes at the food bank, but we have really quite limited resources there, so we've chosen to use outside locations. Lately, we've been using the Masonic Hall in St. George, they have a kitchen that's nice and wide and open, and we've been hosting classes. So far, we've made jam, we've made pickles, and we have a canning session coming up in just a couple of weeks, where food bank clients, but also community members, are able to join us. It's free, they get to learn some things together, they get to have a lunch, and at the end of the day, everybody brings home everything that they made. Our Kids in the Kitchen Program, this one has to be one of the most fun ones. Unfortunately, it's been on hold this year and last year due to COVID. We normally work with the St. George Elementary School, and we take grade five students, and we actually are able to take them from the school to a local church, where we, each student will learn how to make a different meal each week. It's a six-week program, and at the end of the six weeks, these students then actually go and enjoy a fine dining experience, so they get the white linen tablecloths and the breadsticks on the tables, and for some students, that may be the only time they get to enjoy that. I'll never forget one of the first sessions that we hosted, there was a young man that had no idea what a carrot peeler was and what it did. There's a lot of really great skills that kids can learn by being in the kitchen, and it's different for everybody, what they might need, sometimes they just need a little time and attention, but others really like to learn how to hold that carrot peeler, and what that can do for you. So this is a, a program we really hope to bring back soon, once COVID makes things a little easier. And our Christmas hamper program, so this is honestly where we're focusing a lot of our efforts from here until December twenty-fifth. The food bank, every year, we pack up one hundred and fifty Christmas hampers, it includes everything you need for a turkey dinner, plus extras for your cupboard. The last few years, we've gone to different groups and businesses, and we've asked them to sponsor an item in the hamper basket, so we look at one group and we'll ask them to, to collect one hundred and fifty cans of peas, and that, that really gives that group the feeling of doing something. They know that when a family sits down to that meal, all the peel, all the peas on their plate were because of you. So this is a really great way that we've started doing the last three or four years, and I find the community responds really, really well to it, and what happens is, at the end, you know, at the end of the season, everybody gets these boxes, and many groups in the community get to have that satisfaction, knowing that they really helped somebody. Our Rescue Box Program, this happens through many partners, partners such as the St. George Extramural Nurses, our mental health workers, and now the RCMP detachments. So what this is, is this is a box of dry packaged goods that we pack up twice a year, and we pass out to different partners. Occasionally, a nurse may be in a patient's home, or maybe a, an RCMP officer may be called into a home, and they find out that there's really no resources in the cupboard. There may be no food, there may be no, nothing in the fridge. They are immediately prepared to meet that need. Inside of that box also has the food bank contact information, so that box will get somebody through in night or two, until the food bank is either open again, or until they can connect with us and we can have food delivered to them. Our Community Pantry, this is located on Main Street in St. George, and actually, Blacks Harbor, I believe you guys have one now as well, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's wonderful. So thanks to partners, such as the Multicultural Association, they monitor this cupboard five days a week, so as they're leaving their office, somebody is always looking in it, making sure there's something there for the night. I truly feel that's extremely important for the success of something like this, is you really need somebody who's gonna take ownership of that. The community really does look after it, but knowing that there's somebody who can always have a quick peek and make sure it's full is definitely important. Okay, so last year, one thousand, three hundred and fifty, that's how many volunteer hours we had recorded. Now, I know that number is actually quite a bit larger, because there's many things that volunteers do without being asked, and they don't log their time. Volunteers, I have volunteers who bake for people, I have volunteers who pack up hampers, who drive to go pick up food. Volunteering can look different for everybody, and we can try to suit everybody's tastes and needs, always looking for more of them. We get asked quite often, what is it that we need? Here's a quick list. First and foremost, we're always looking for donations of food and cash. The next thing we're always looking for, again, is volunteers, if you haven't heard me say that yet, and community partners. Partners are really what help us get things done, they help us get these programs to the families who need them. Again, volunteers with trucks, donations of gently-used clothing and footwear, and gently-used furniture and household items. This is just a quick snapshot, and it's not nearly all of them, these are just some of the really great things that have happened over the last few years. And I really want to thank you, Village Council, for allowing me to come here today and tell you a little bit about our services. I really could talk your ear off for much, much longer, I'll try not to take too much time. I do have just one more program I'd like to mention to you. The reason it's not in the... The reason it's not in the, uh, slideshow that you're seeing is number one, it's relatively new. And number two, we're cautious to label it as a food bank program for many reasons. One of them being that occasionally, food bank can have a bit of a stigma attached to it. And we don't really want that to be intertwined with this program at all. This program is called the Community Food Smart Program, and we're, we've begun it on a three-month pilot project. What this is, is this is a membership-based vegetable program. So in order to become a member, you pay ten dollars just once, and that covers your membership for the whole year. After that, you pay fifteen dollars per month, and you receive a produce bag, which has a value of about thirty dollars. Your produce bag will always have carrots, potatoes, onions, apples and oranges. And the other things are just an act, extra bonus, which will change from month to month, based on availability, the seasons. So I do have a few brochures here I'd like to leave with you. Again, I'm just here today, so you guys can share with other people what we're doing. There's still, again, that misconception, we're just passing out food, but as you saw today, we're doing much, much more. We want to make sure that you can help share that information with others.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight, Sarah. Um, what your group does is extraordinary for, for, for our area, not just for Black's Harbor, but the whole area, everybody on the U.S.A. area. So I wanna thank you on behalf of Black's Harbor for what you guys do. It's great what you do.
Thank you.
I, I'm gonna turn this over to Council, Council, they have, have questions or comments?
Again, thank you for coming down and sharing, uh, everything that you guys do for the community. Personally, I think there's some opportunities here where, I don't know, we'll discuss with, I'd like to discuss with Council, to see how we can work with you guys to, you know, help, you know, support the food bank for this area, especially considering, you know, we do have some residents here in the harbor that depend on it, so very, very important, and, uh, yeah, again, thanks for coming down to share everything about the food bank.
The food bank does partner with, um, the, the Charlotte County, the, the dialer rides, so people that don't have access to come into the food bank to pick up their food, we have food delivered to their homes.
Excellent.
No, you're, thank you.
That's great, so thank you for coming, um, I would just like to add on that same thing. Um, I think there's some synergies, we might be able to work some of these programs in Black's Harbor, um, for children or seniors here that wanna partake, but may not have transportation, um, to St. George, um, at any time, so thank you for coming in and sharing all of, all this information.
Awesome, thank you for having me.
Like always, my truck and trailer's there anytime you want.
I better have you on speed dial by the time I leave.
I saw the presentation you did for St. George, I just watched it on, on the YouTube there. Sometimes you, you see, you hear something the second time, you catch more of them, but thank you very much for, again, for coming in tonight, and, uh, and, uh, if, if anything you need, let us know. Anything else, anything else above and beyond, let us know, please, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Council. Yeah, that's all we have for presentations tonight, uh, brings us to, uh, eleven communications. Uh, the first one we have tonight, Council, is from the Lions Club requ- request. Uh, I'll read it out, and, 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 um. Uh, dear Mayor Craig and Village Councilors, uh, last year, our Christmas telethon funds assisted twenty-two families in the Black's Harbor area, as well as other families in local areas. We enjoy putting on this event, so that children may have a wonderful Christmas. At this time, we would like to ask if it's possible to make a donation to the telethon, where your pledge will be aired live on November the twenty-eighth, two, twenty-twenty-one. We thank you in advance for helping our, our much-needed cause, Eastern Charlotte Lions Telethon Committee, producer, Lion Scott Tracy. Uh, would the Council like to make a motion to, uh, with that, tonight?
Uh, so we defer that to the Finance Committee for their approval.
Seconded by, Councilor Thompson. Question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Next is the, from the Charlotte County Hospital Foundation. Uh, dear friends, the Charlotte County Hospital Foundation and ninety-eight point one Charlotte FM are hosting our eighth annual radio-a-thon on October the seventh. This year's theme is visioning for the future of CCH. We're hoping to raise seventy-five thousand dollars to purchase beds and special mattresses for comfort to our patients. We have also attached a corporate challenge sheet, which allows your business to challenge other local businesses. If your business is interested in this, please fill in the highlighted areas on this form and return prior to radio-a-thon day. We would like to be, we also would like you to be aware of the following ways of payments on the next page. Debit will also be an option on, on the day of radio-a-thon. Uh, on behalf of the Board Trustees of Charlotte County Hospital Foundation, and more importantly, the residents of Charlotte County, thank you for your consideration to this fundraising campaign. That's from Melanie Cameron, Secretary. Council, what, what is your, uh, would you like to do with that tonight?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion that, to be it resolved, Council, for this request as well to Finance.
Great, and seconded by Deputy Mayor. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motions? Okay, great.
Just said October seventh, so can, can we still contribute?
Yeah, I'm sure that, yeah.
Okay, yep.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Next is the pickleball request. Did I say it right?
Yep.
Great, this is all new to me, okay. Brent DeCai, Pickleball Group. Uh, did, 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 they're requesting, uh, the, the curling s- uh, surface be used for pickleball. Uh, it's on Thursday nights from six-thirty to eight-thirty. And it's a drop-in event, and I guess what they do, they collect three dollars per person, and that money comes back to the, uh, to Black's Harbor for the use of the surface. I guess, is that correct? Would that be Deputy Mayor, would that be?
Yeah, actually, I'm sure you're.
Oh, Brent, okay, great. Brent.
I'm here, I'm here, I listen to Sarah, I'm on, uh,
Okay, I thought you were there.
Board, and I'm on the other board, and then I'm with the pickleball group.
Brent, why don't you, why don't you stand for a second, that way the camera can pick you up, and I just wanna, the, 'cause you're, you're here, I want everybody to know, even the microphone's right there, and the camera's just turned around. Maybe you wanna describe what pickleball is, just for.
Uh, basically, um, what we were doing, pickleball, it's, it's a racket sport, you, it's played in a, a badminton court, and we were, this group started up with John Healy back about five years ago, and we were renting the, the community use of schools, we were renting St. George Elementary, the, the gymnasium. Uh, since COVID hit, uh, we don't have the indoor facility, and we've been using the, uh, St. George tennis courts. We have three of the back courts converted for pickleball. And we have a pickleball, uh, there's a webpage, our, uh, Facebook page, and we usually play Thursday nights, anywhere from five-thirty till it gets dark. And generally now, it's got to the point that, uh, Alicia Bradley is always updating. There's, there's people, they're up there pretty much every night, and it's nice. So basically, once we, uh, get to this time of the year, um, our outdoor season comes to an end, it gets, it's, uh, too windy, too cold. Last year, we contacted the, uh, the village here, and then they rented us the, uh, curling club. So we went in there last year, and I put lines in the floor, and whenever the, uh, uh, when it was open for, for hockey, the, the rink, the ice is in, we were meeting down there, and we, it was, basically, it's a drop-in fee, so whoever wants to play stops in, pays three dollars, I collect the money. And once a month or so, I bring the money down, I turn it up into the office here, so.
Great, any questions for the Council on, on, do you wanna describe what pickleball is, maybe?
Yeah, it's, it's, well, yeah, yeah, you have a, you have a, a short paddle, uh, you have a wiffle ball, it's got the holes in it. You, it's two people per team, or two people per side, and it, it's, it's, it's similar, similar to, it, it's kinda like a cross between tennis, uh, but on a much smaller court service. And we've got people playing, we've got, uh, um, high school students, right up to our, our, Rob Rayner is, is a regular, uh, that, that comes all the time. Down here, uh, Drew that, that runs the rink, Drew and his wife, they, well, she plays more than he does. Drew, she, he's played a couple of times, Michelle is, uh, quite, uh, quite often playing. And it's just, uh, something to do to, to exercise, basically, and, and social event. And we, we go by all of the, the COVID regulations, we, we, we basically wash the ball, and people come in, and uh, we, we, we're entering through the, the main doors, uh, at the curling, or at the, uh, uh, hockey rink, and the next thing, go through the side doors, what we were doing, they did last year, so.
Any questions, uh, Council, you, I mean, you'll be checking to make sure everybody's double vaccinated.
Yes, yes.
Great, uh, any questions or concerns from Council? If not, I'll, I'll entertain a motion from Council, if, if, if they so wish.
Be it resolved, the Council will accept the application for the use of the old curling surface area to play pickleball for the following, and, uh, she said a three dollars, uh, drop-in fee.
Great, that, we have a motion on the floor by Deputy Mayor, seconded by, uh, Councilor Wells. Question or comment on the motion, you can, you can direct your question to.
I do have a question.
To Brent, yeah?
I would just ask if you work with the Village Office just to do, uh, COVID plan? Like, just make your COVID plans in the Village Office? That would be the only thing that we would ask.
Okay, I'll do that.
That's great, any other questions or comments on the motion? Council Thompson, do you look?
No, no, I think it's been answered.
Good, okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Thank you very much for coming in, you guys, and I really appreciate it, so. You guys are welcome to stay the rest of the evening, it's up to you, but, uh,
There might be a couple soap operas that we have to move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I, I have on here. I have on here a correspondence for information, was there something there that I? Nothing look good, I like that. This is arising from the minutes. And finish business. New business. Number fifteen. Remembrance Day Ceremony at the arena, be it, uh, looking for a motion from Council to approve the curling surface, uh, for the remembrance, for the Remembrance Day's, uh, ceremony for the, for the Legion, and that'd be Council.
Uh, be it resolved that Council approved the use of the curling surface for this year's Remembrance Day Ceremony?
Council Ritchie makes the motion, Council Libby makes a second to. Question or comment on that? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Thank you, Council, that's a good motion. Okay, motion to move into closed session, okay, that is what we are up to next. Uh, I'm looking for a motion of, uh, to move, uh, into closed session in accordance with sixty-eight point one G and sixty-eight one J of the Local Governance Act, would somebody like to make that motion? Council Thompson, seconded by Council Wells. Yeah, yeah, you please do, yeah.
Yeah, so be it resolved that Council entertain a motion to move the meeting into a closed door in accordance to sixty-eight one of the Local Governance Act. Um, that, that Local Governance Act states, a council meeting or committee of councils meeting shall be closed to the public for the duration of this discussion. If it is necessary to discuss litigation or potential litigation affecting the local government or any corporation referred to in subsection eight-one, the local government's agencies, boards, or commissions, including a matter before the administrative tribunal, labor, unemployment matters, including negotiation of collective agreements.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to for that. Council Wells already seconded it. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously, okay, at this moment, I'm gonna ask everybody to, yes, got Deputy Mayor?
Question on what?
He's gonna pause.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna ask, yeah, so at this moment, I have to ask CHCL just to do a pause. Okay, Council, we are back into the regular meeting, uh, and we're back up to fifteen-three. Saying tender, we're gonna hold off on that, because it hasn't been fourteen days yet, so we're gonna hold off on that. Um, purchase of the trackless, this is the, uh,
That should be, that should be, that should be re-tendered.
Purchase of.
That's the rest of the.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, so I'm gonna look for the Deputy Mayor from the, for that?
Be it resolved that Council re-tender the winter sand to allow fourteen days for people to submit.
Great, Deputy, Council Ritchie, question or comment? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, thank you. Uh, next is fifteen-four, purchase, I get excited when I see the purchase of the trackless. Uh, the, uh, be it resolved, it is written in front of you, the Council transferred fifteen thousand dollars plus HST from the General Capital Reserve Fund to the General Capital Fund to purchase a used trackless. Now, I'm, I'm gonna look for a motion from Council for that first.
Be it resolved?
Yep, I just read it, but you guys make, I can't make that motion.
Yeah, be it resolved that Council transfer fifteen thousand dollars plus HST from the General Capital Reserve Fund to the General Capital Fund to purchase a used trackless.
Great, seconded by, uh, Council Wells. Okay, at this point, is question or comment on the, on the motion? And I'm going to go to Council Wells, or Deputy Mayor to, to, uh, give more information on this, because it's a purchase, and maybe it's good for the public to know what, what this is all about.
Want me to do it, or you?
No, I go for it.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor, go ahead, and then Council Wells, you chime in when, when he misses.
So we went for a road trip last week, uh, looked at a couple of units, and the one that we have decided to go forward on purchasing is from the city of Fredericton. It's in great condition, they, uh, they've done a few small repairs for us on it, and we are looking for the option of buying one, um, accessory for it with them. We just haven't got a total price from them yet, but, uh, anyway, at least we'll be able to keep sidewalks clean this year, so.
Council, Council Wells, anything you'd like to add?
No, go ahead.
Okay, great, any questions or comments? There was, there was some comments, now any questions, any questions on that? No, no questions at all?
One, one point, I guess, to make, it comes with all the attachments.
It comes with the snow, that's where I should say that, come with the snow blower and the plow. We're looking at, uh, the extra accessory would be the pulled behind sand unit that we could, sand or salt that we could fill and do all of our sidewalks in one swath, instead of making many trips back and forth. Just, you know, even saving John, wear and tear and fuel, so.
Excellent, yeah, great.
Any other questions or comments on that? I'll, I'll make one comment. Uh, I wanna thank Deputy Mayor and Council Wells, uh, for making the trip. Me, actually, me a couple of trips last week, was looking at different ones, so I wanna thank you guys very, very much on behalf of all of the Council, and, and the village for, for, uh, going above and beyond. And of course, Ricky Levitt, uh, head of Public Works, who, who went along too, because I, I, I certainly believe that we always have to take advice from the people that work for us, and it's great to have the, make sure that Ricky went along too, so I wanna thank, thank all three of you for, for doing that. Any other questions or comments on this?
Just costume, meal, that's it, much.
Great, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Fifteen-five, this is my, one of my favorite ones too, Council Thompson, as resurfacing of the court to the school. We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, be it resolved that Council award contract twenty-one dash zero zero eight, quotation number two-one-two-eight oh four dash Q three, to premium paving and ceiling for sixteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for fine grading and paving of the basketball court at the Black's Harbor School.
We have a motion on the floor, seconded by, oh, we got Council Wells, just beat Council Ritchie west by air. Okay, any question or comment on the motion? Council Thom, Council Thompson, you're first.
When do we think that that might be?
So, yeah, I'll, I'll just make a point, I guess, so I did reach out to, um, to the, uh, the individual who's responsible for maintenance at the school today, and indicated our intent, and, uh, working with the CAO as well. Um, our intention would be to prep that space next week with, uh, with some of our own labor forces and our own equipment, and have it be in a position to actually put the surface and the asphalt down the first week of November. Yeah, so, um, so we're gonna work with the school to try to figure out timelines when, when it's best to actually complete the work, and to schedule premium paving to come in and complete the work. So they have, um, the school is out, actually gonna have a resource available for us to install the nets as well. They have, um, they have knowledge, and they've done a lot of them in the past as individuals, so they're gonna be available to assist our own forces to put the nets in, so. So, yeah, essentially, the nets, uh, that the, the village has currently, we're gonna be, uh, reusing or utilizing those to install at the school, along with, uh, you know, putting the new asphalt service down and new line painting, so it's exciting for, uh, for all the residents of the community, plus, you know, the schoolchildren as well, so.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? I wanna thank, uh, Council for taking, doing this right. Uh, I know it took, this took a little bit longer than what, uh, probably the public expected, but, uh, we want, uh, this Council wanted to make sure it was done right, so I wanna thank Council for, for, for this. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Sixteen, consideration of bylaws, um.
Be it resolved that Council defer this to a special meeting to make sure that it's done complete.
Deputy Mayor, seconded by. I'll just, I'd just like to make a comment on that, I'm, I'm not very happy with us having. I'll just, I'd just like to make a comment on that, I'm, I'm not very happy with us having to defer that to a, a special late, and, uh, I'm not, as mayor, I'm not happy at all, so, so, uh, we are gonna, we are, as a council, are gonna be moving on this as quick as we can, but, uh, because of the situation, I'm, it, it's just not professional. Um, that brings us to seventeen, councilors' concerns, did I miss anything?
Uh, fifteen-two.
Six, another zone.
Sixty, oh, the same thing, okay, okay, sorry, we had two rezoners.
Be it resolved that council defer the reading to a special meeting on the zoning, uh, PID of one-five-one-five-two-two-seven-five.
Great, and seconded by Counselor Libby. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, that's passed unanimously. My same comment on that one. Okay, that brings us to councilors' concerns, I have a few, a few tonight, I wanna just take a few min- minutes. Our condolences reach out to the family and friends of Karen Louise Campbell. I personally knew Karen and was amazed how strong and independent a person she was. Blacks Harbor certainly has lost a great person, who through her resiliency and determination brought through, uh, brought her through many challenges in her life. Karen always wanted to be treated as an equal, and she always told you what she was thinking. The one thing I loved about Karen the most was her sense of humor and her laugh, and that is what we were missed about her the most. To her father Roland, or Rowley as we call him, her sisters Bonnie, Patricia, and especially Andrea, who just retired from years of dedicated service to this village, we extend our deepest sympathies on your loss. Tonight, our condolences reach out to the family and friends of Arnold Seymour Hawkins of Beaver Harbor, who passed away on September the eighteenth. Recently, he held the honor of being the oldest Canadian-born man. Where on his one-hundred-and-tenth birthday, he received over six thousand cards and well wishes from all over. He is survived by his son Ronald of Beaver Harbor and Wayne here of Blacks Harbor, and daughter, daughters, uh, Belva McIntyre of St. Andrews, Anita Fry of Chris Pan Sis, and Violet McKinley of Penfield. On behalf of the village of Blacks Harbor, I extend sympathies to the family of former MLA and Provincial Cabinet Minister Anne Bro, who passed away on September the twenty-sixth. Anne was part of the historical October twenty-seventh nineteen eighty-seven provincial election that saw Frank McKenna's government sweep the entire province and take every seat in the legisla- legislature, leaving Richard Hatfield conservatives. Anne became the MLA representing St. Stephen and the Islands, and subsequently, a cabinet minister in Frank McKenna's new government. On behalf of the village, council, and myself, our sympathies go up to the family and friends of Donald Turnbull, who passed away on September twenty-seventh. To Donald's sons, Donald Junior, Donald Junior, and Dwayne Turnbull, our sincerest condolences. On behalf of the village of Blacks Harbor, I extend deepest sympathies to the family of Sheldon Wilcox, who passed away on October fifth. Over the years, Sheldon worked at the Penfield Air Base, worked on the construction of the New River Campground. He worked on the construction of Point de Pearl, and worked at Connors Brothers, and finally, Keith Building Supplies where he retired. After retirement, he worked casually here at the Blacks Harbor School as a custodian. Sheldon was a longtime member of the Wesleyan Church here in Blacks Harbor, and will be sadly missed by his family and all that, that knew him. On behalf of the village of Blacks Harbor, I extend our heartfelt sympathies to the family and one of my close friends and colleagues since nineteen eighty-eight, Alan Sullivan, who passed away after a long struggle on October the sixth. Al is survived by his wife Rhana, three daughters Carrie, Julie, and Beth, and one son Peter. Family, family was Al's world. Al was a, a, a skillful and exceptional meat cutter who worked for Dominion Stores, Atlantic Hoasailor Stores, Savvy, Fresh Mart, and Terry's Beef and More. Al knew his trade better than most meat cutters up today. He had more experience than any supervisor of any corporate store, and most meat, most meat cutters of today never cut beef other than what comes out of a box. Al's knowledge, patience, and wisdom can never be replaced. Al always, and I mean always, had a great sense of humor and consistently wanted to make people laugh and smile. Al was invariably wanting to help people, help anyone that needed help. Al was a life, a longtime member of the Blacks Harbor Wesleyan Church and a former caretaker of the Penfield Ru- Rural Cemetery. On behalf of the village of Blacks Harbor, and on my own behalf, I wish to extend my sincerest condolences to the family and close friends of Jim Justinson, who passed away after a brief illness on October the seventh. Jim was born here in Blacks Harbor and is survived by his wife of sixty-two years, Phyllis. Jim worked most of his career for Connors Brothers, and his greatest joy was his grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Jim is also survived by his sister Marlene Justinson of Blacks Harbor. His children Elaine, Jeffrey, David, Eugene, Fred here at Blacks Harbor, and, and Fred was a former village councillor. Uh, Michael and Lawrence, Lawrence is our, our, as everybody knows, our deputy fire chief. And again, our sympathies go up to the entire family tonight. Tonight, I'm asking all the residents to assist me in making sure that I have information on anybody on, on any upcoming special birthdays or anniversaries, so that we as a village can acknowledge them in a special way. They can contact me directly, or please call, call the village and ask for Cara, who will help make, make sure there's a certificate especially made up for them, and she will inform me so I can deliver it. I'll go on to Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I guess, um, just one quick note, um, I've had a few, uh, few people come up to me asking about some, uh, some of the work we've, we've been looking at on, on slightly premises, so just as a reminder, if anyone does have a complaint, um, there is an avenue that you can, uh, you can make the complaint through the village. Uh, I think it's important that people realize that, and I'm not sure if everybody understands that that is an avenue that can be taken, so. Anyway, just wanted to make that known.
On that note, um, I have a couple of things tonight. Um, Blacks Harbor is planning a community cleanup day for November thirteenth from eight AM to one PM. This will be a chance for everyone to clean up the community, their properties, and will make it easier for you to dispose of the items that are not accepted on, um, regular garbage pickup days. So, things like paint cans, electronics, batteries, white goods, et cetera. Um, we'll give you some leads on where to send that stuff and help you get rid of it, so. Um, we'll also have, we've arranged to have an additional garbage day that week. Um, so you'll have a garbage pickup on Friday and on Saturday, um, which will allow you to get rid of more goods. Um, more details will be posted at the office and on the website and Facebook in the coming days, so that you can mark that on your calendars. Um, next up, I just wanted to do a little bit of a Chase the Ace update. Um, this week's jackpot is seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. The deadline to buy tickets for, for supporting the arena is tomorrow at four PM. And this week, for each ticket that you purchase towards Chase the Ace, um, you'll get a ticket into a draw for one hour of free ice time. The draw is tomorrow at four PM, and, um, you can continue to buy tickets at the village office, Home Hardware. You can contact me by email or Cara Hat. Um, so far, we've raised seventeen hundred dollars and for, seventeen hundred and forty dollars for the arena, and we've got a promising week this week, so, um, I'd just like to thank Home Hardware, Cara Hat, Christie Blanchard, and Mary Chevry, who are also helping to, uh, sell those tickets every week, so. Um, and then with that, we also have more news and donations to the arena. The Kitchen, the, uh, new restaurant in Blacks Harbor is donating their bottle redemption. Um, each, I don't know when they take them in, but continuously, um, to the arena. So, today I picked up that money, and that was eighty-five dollars and thirty-five cents, um, on the first pickup, so. I'd like to thank the Kitchen for that, and it's very special, and, um, it's great to have you guys in our community. We're really happy to, uh, see every day on the, on the way by, and check in and have soup or tea. It's really nice to have you, um, as a part of this community. That's it for me.
Great, Deputy Mayor.
So, I got a couple things, uh, we've had a community outreach this week about, uh, obviously, we all know that you can't go in the arena if you're not double vaccinated or have a medical exemption. So, it's been asked, can we look at installing a webcam? Probably up on the curling, looking down the ice for people that aren't, uh, vaccinated or, you know, cannot be. That they could watch their kids or their, you know, grandchildren out on the ice, so. I would like to look at that and with this council, and, uh, figure out what the details are with that and how we can do it. We have Wi-Fi there, so that's not a real hard thing, I just need to know what we do about, uh, privacy and all that kind of stuff, so. Anyway, I, we would like to, uh, look at that, the cost of a camera's not a lot of money, so. I just would like to be able to give that option to people, that, uh, we'd like to see the kids playing hockey, it's on the ice, that they can't go inside. Uh, the other thing is, is I see there's a job posting up on the village's website. I would ask that we extend that a little bit, 'cause it ends Friday. Uh, four days is really not enough time, I don't think, for somebody to apply for the, uh, casual public works. And, uh, that's about it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Wells?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, Counselor Ritchie.
Nice, Jerry, um, I would just like to talk about the home and school committee at the Blacks Harbor School. So, someone had reached out asking, um, if I could just help assist with finding more people to join that committee, um, because they had low participation, um, on their first meeting. So, we're just looking, if you have time, um, just wanna look at my notes here, so it's just approximately a couple hours per month. Um, that'll be flexible depending on the goals that the committee sets. Um, but they are looking for people to attend that, um, at the Blacks Harbor School. So, if you're a parent with a child there and would like to do that, if you could just reach out to either myself, um, or call the office. Um, we'd just like to put those names forward to, to the person that is taking ownership of the committee at this time. Um, and I also just wanted to say that it's really nice driving through town and seeing all the Remembrance Day signs that people have out on their front lawns, um, certainly puts a smile on my face, it's ni- it's really nice to see, um, people privately getting signs and putting them out on their front lawn to acknowledge the day. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Counselor Ritchie. Um, one, one last thing, again, I want to thank CHCO for being here tonight, Andrew Sutton, Dale, Dale Wells, you're the newest addition, uh, we're gonna be seeing a lot of you guys over the next few, four years, you know, for us. So, thank you for, again, for being here tonight. Thank Patrick Watt too, Patrick Watt, uh, is basically, I guess, would you say the head guy there at CHCO? Or what, but he's, uh, tonight, uh, Patrick made sure that we have microphones here, and they're borrowed from St. Andrews again. Our microphones will probably be in, uh, will probably be here, oh, I wasn't supposed to say that. St. Andrews doesn't know we borrow them, okay. It's too late now. But, uh, uh, we will have our own microphones probably the next day or two, ours, ours was due in today, but they didn't quite make it, so the next day or two, we'll have our own. So, that brings us to question period, if, if the camera can just roll over to the studio audience. And I guess we don't have anybody there, so, uh, we'll move on to number nineteen. Next meeting is, we're gonna have a special meeting probably on Monday, and, uh, our regular council meeting will be November the seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, at six-thirty PM. That's Wednesday, November the seventeenth, at six-thirty PM, and that is in accordance with the, uh, bylaw oh-four-ninety-six. A bylaw respecting the procedures and organization of the council of Blacks Harbor. At this point, I'll go to number twenty, which is adjournment, I'll look for a, a motion.
Be it resolved, a meeting be adjourned at seven-fifty PM.
It's probably our longest meeting, isn't it? And, uh, seconded by. Thompson, all those in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.